Carol is joining us.
I haven't heard anything otherwise, so she's probably here in person.
She'll be right here.
They have the warrants.
Of course you can. I have not paid one attention to them.
It's okay.
All right.
All right, six twenty-nine. We're holding.
It's the one.
Yep.
Teresa was out last week, so she put them both together.
She didn't lift her head when I was in this morning, so I knew she was busy.
I came in to tell her that I'll come by tomorrow sometime if you have it done. She hands it to me. I'm like, really?
I was in earlier and she did not lift her head this morning, which I knew she means she was doing something for a business.
Heard the door just rang.
Actually, you go.
Are you still going for your long walks?
Okay. Oh, I just want to, I don't like to leave the downstairs. I'll go, I'll go.
Your long walks. You used to go for your long walks.
Yes.
I did. Not the best lap. I did the burger.
The best lob, let's say that.
I did loves. It was great. It was spectacular.
I know, or you.
Not real big. Although that would have been interesting, but you know, it's, it's like.
Carol, how are you?
Sometimes they, I hear. Did you really? So good for you. I, it's on my list, but I, I kind of like wants to really don't want it, you know? You know, it's just like, that's such a giant list. That's cool. I, it's cool. I know you've done that twice. That's awesome. Are you running for select, are you running for select, John?
All right, it's six thirty-five in Reed Field Main. Please stand and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one individual liberty and justice for all.
All right.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Monday, April twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three Select Board meeting of the Reed Field Select Board. This evening we have plenty of agenda items and we are scheduled till eight P M. We begin this evening with item twenty-three, one oh eight, the minutes from April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes of April tenth, two thousand and twenty-three with a couple of grammatical errors that I'll let on, you know, after the meeting. Okay.
As amended then, yes.
Yes. Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from April tenth as amended. Is there any further discussion? Yes.
Um, I would like to add that I made two motions. One was the motion to split out all of the items in the capital improvement warrant article. And it was not seconded, so it didn't go anywhere. And I also made another motion to have open space in its own article, and that was not seconded, but I would like all of that noted.
Sure, yes.
It should have been.
Yeah, it should have been in it.
That might have been during the, but like when we were discussing all the articles.
I think, I think those were, I think those actual motions were from the meeting before. I think you just spoke to them this last time.
It was this last time.
No, it was, it was, yeah, it was, we reviewed it at April ten. Yeah, that's when we went through and said, yeah.
Was actually, it was both. Let me just put it that way. It was spoken at both.
To watch the tape and find it.
Excellent. So good. So, so the motion is still as amended, so we have those two changes. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Thank you very much. Item twenty-three, one oh nine are warrants forty-one through forty-two. I think this is all. Catherine Woodson, Catherine, take it away.
Okay. Just have to find my paper here. Okay, let me get the right numbers. So forty-one A and B were both state fee warrants that went out. One was for five thousand eight hundred sixty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And the second was for three thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars. Payroll was warrant forty-two. That was for twenty-two thousand five hundred ninety-five oh seven. And warrant forty-one was in the amount of, I'm going to make sure I do this right, four hundred. Shoot, I meant to ask, anyway, it was in the amount of four hundred and thirty-one dollars. Four hundred thirty-one thousand, six dollars and five cents. However, that is not what we're actually paying. So Eric, should I be reducing that by the payment that we did not make?
Yes.
Okay, so I just have to do some quick math here. And then I'll tell you what it's for.
Can I ask a question about a warrant article? It, it, remind me, is Douglas Alborn, is that a, a, a firm, some sort of?
No.
What we're talking about.
Oh, that's what, yeah, okay. He was a former property owner in Reed Field, who we had foreclosed on. And we had been working to return the proceeds of that sale to him, which is not going to be as easy as we had intended.
Okay.
So we'll, we'll, we'll talk more about that later, but in short, we're likely going to have to have a, an ordinance to allow us to do that.
Oh, heavens.
Because state law essentially supersedes even our policy on that that was supported through, through, through our administrative ordinance. But roundabout way of saying, we don't have the authority to give the money back unless we have an ordinance.
Okay. Well, that looks like something we have to look forward to.
It is, unfortunately.
Are you still doing math?
Well, no, I'm having my calculator do it.
Oh, wonderful. Anyway, it's the satellites.
Okay, so this is going to be, this is going to affect the bottom line then. We do that also, sorry.
So again, we're just, there was an adjustment to one of the.
Line items.
Line items. And so that's why we are doing some math. That's why we do this warrant review to make sure that everyone knows how the, the, every bit of money is going out. These warrants are available online under the reedfieldmain.org. And you can find all of the information that we are looking at ourselves under the Select Board link. So if you're following along at home and want that.
So the correct amount for warrant forty-one is going to be three hundred ninety-eight thousand, ninety dollars and thirty-five cents. And the total is going to be four hundred twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. And so the cause for that, as Eric said, but I want to do it exactly was, was printed in the warrant. No, just too many pages. So it was vendor zero zero two two five to Douglas Alborn. It was proceeds of a property sale and as Eric stated, we have to have an ordinance in order to disperse this. And it was for the amount of thirty-two thousand nine fifteen and seventeen cents. So this was a property that we foreclosed on, and this is the remainder after we paid the fees for all the filing and the cost of selling the property.
And all the back taxes.
And all the back taxes, yes, obviously. And this is more than the person had been offered by someone prior to the foreclosure.
Okay.
So this is working out in the former owner's benefit financially, except that he's going to have to wait at least six months to get his money now. Because the next, unless we call it a special town meeting, but if we do it in November, when we're already having a election, we could do it at that point in time. So this is something that needs to come up on a future agenda chair.
Right on. I said, looking forward to it. We'll probably discuss that at our retreat.
So other items of interest, I just wanted to point out that Archie's Incorporated has a charge for two thousand six hundred thirty-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. And they're one of our commercial haulers, so it seems odd that we, we, we would be paying them. But they're under a special agreement because they have a compactor truck that they pick up with Eric.
Yes.
We have them take it directly to Norwich Walk. And they pay for it in Norwich Walk, but it's billed at the town rate. So that prevents us from having to have that unloaded into our compactor, which would take a long time and it would fill our compactor up and cause us to have a transportation fee on top of it. So they just do it directly. And they're happy with that because then they can take it whenever their fault and it's quicker for them. So it works out.
And we just reimburse them.
We reimburse them.
Gotcha.
Capital Area Youth Softball Association, seven hundred and seventy dollars. This is for the U twelve league that is in Augusta, that they play, and I thought that was really cool. Um, I noticed on our utilities for electricity to Central Maine Power, all but one of the bills, because it's on a different schedule, was two thousand four hundred twelve dollars and thirty-four cents. And I'd like to make the suggestion that we look into going off the standard offer for electric. And maybe quarterly check what the other rates are. Now's probably not the time to do it, but once rates stabilize and start to go down again, I think we could have some real savings. Another one that was really cool, Coastal Maine Botanical Gardens for a hundred and fifty dollars. This is a library pass enrollment. So for a hundred and fifty dollars, the town of Reed Field gets a pass that any resident or summer resident, you know, person who has property in town can go to the library and take out the pass. It's for two people for a full day. It's like thirty dollars a day.
It's more than that.
For the fee to get in. And all you have to do is go to the library and sign up with Melissa. So if the day you want to go is taken, sign up for another day. But someone could go, two people from town could go every day all year while they're open for this ridiculously low rate. So that's.
It also includes children. You can get up to two adults and four children on that.
On that one pass.
On that one pass.
Wow, nice. That's like the best hundred and fifty dollars I think we've ever spent. I mean, the return is gigantic. So I just thought that was real interesting. On the Kennebec Maine Valley Humane Society, eleven hundred and sixty-two dollars is quarterly. And that was paid. We had a new door installed downstairs here at the town office that was the PDQ door for two thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. It's really cool because it's got glass in it. So when you're going to walk in, you can see who's inside the office already, but more importantly, when you go to leave, you're not going to push into somebody who's standing in the hallway trying to come into the office. And that looks really super. So altogether, we came up with. I don't know where we're doing.
Uh, I have a total of four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents.
That would be correct.
And that is for both warrants, yes.
That's, that's for all four.
All four, okay. Okey dokey.
I'll make a motion to approve those warrants in the amount Dennis just mentioned, the amended amount.
I'll second.
All right, it has been moved and seconded to approve the warrants for a total of four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. Is there any further discussion? I just want to say, first of all, thank you, Catherine. Thank you for being thorough. Thank you for doing a wonderful job and we certainly appreciate it. All in favor? Thank you very much.
And I'll just point out that we signed this at the last meeting and Steve is going to grab that one back and we're going to pass it around so that everyone can sign it. This was the one that was ready today. And I've reviewed it so it can be signed at your leisure tonight before we leave.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent. We now come to communications. We have twenty minutes set aside for this item. Select Board communications are first. If any member of the Select Board would like to address the public, now is your time. Go ahead, Carol.
Few people have asked about the electric car in the parking lot. And this was passed when I was pretty new. Is there any monthly or annual fees we're paying for that?
Not, not, no, there's not.
Okay, I thought it said that when we voted on it was budget neutral.
Yeah, the, in, in a year or so, we have the opportunity to, to, to buy the lease if we'd like to. But right now, we're not paying anything for that lease. We do have a small electric fee for the, the, you know, the electricity it uses to charge up and so on. But there's no recurring fee and it is, no, 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 no impact currently.
Okay, that's what I thought I recall. Um, and then will there be a vote like a year from now or whatever, when we have the option to buy it out? Is that another, like, discussion and vote?
Yeah, that would be a Select Board decision because I think it would be somewhere around fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. I'd have to look back at the lease, but, um, yeah.
So did we pay the lease fee for the first three years with the rebate that was offered through Efficiency Maine?
Yeah, so the, the, the Efficiency Maine rebate covered the cost of the lease, fully.
Yeah.
Up until the time that we have the purchase option.
That's correct. Yeah, so it's a three-year, three-year period.
And I think, did it cover the whole thing or was part of it offset by what we weren't going to be paying in mileage?
No, what we're, what we're not going to be paying in mileage, and what we haven't paid in mileage is just a, a, a cash benefit or a value to the town of not having to pay for that. Or paying a lower rate because the cost of the E V is per mile, you know, with the current situation is less than, than paying for mileage.
That was, I think it was the electricity that we were going to be charging was going to be far less than what the mileage had been.
Yeah.
And so what we would want to be looking at in another year is if we go back to not having the car and we have to pay someone mileage. And I think some other people have used it besides just the code officer.
Yeah, actually, it gets used a lot more by other, other folks. The code officer just doesn't really like to drive it. And so it, it sits, but when he doesn't drive it, he doesn't get reimbursed for mileage because we have a vehicle that he's able to use. He chooses not to. Probably, I'd say sixty percent of the time, but it's there if he wants it and, and it's great to have for going to conferences, going to Bangor and back, Augusta and back, things like that, so.
Do we know like how much mileage it has on it or anything like?
We do, yeah, we know exactly how much mileage it has on it. But what we don't know is how much mileage we're actually deferring by, by having folks not use it, right? So the code officer, I guess, I, I don't know, we could look at historic numbers to try to estimate what his weekly usage would be, but right now, we don't have, really don't have a record of what his personal vehicle travel is.
Do we know what the mileage is at this point on, on?
I, I can find that, yeah.
Just, I know, um, the animal control officer too had the option to use it, but he has to go off-road sometimes. And that's probably the same thing with chip going down like camp roads and all that stuff. Sometimes a truck is much more.
Sometimes, yeah, I think, but that's about a two percent issue with the code officer. I, I, I'm not sure why he doesn't use it more, but that's just my outlook on it.
Likes his truck.
Yeah, yeah, he likes his truck, yeah.
So at his expense, that's okay?
Yeah. Anyone else?
You had a second thing, I think, Carol? Oh, it was the warrants.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It, the thirty-something thousand.
Yeah.
Excellent. The one thing I wanted to bring up during this particular portion is for our Heritage Days. We had our first meeting this Sunday at one o'clock and had some new folks show up from the library and also from the Reed Field Elementary Parent Association, or REPA, which is also going to be a part of our celebration this year. We are having our next meeting on Sunday, May twenty-eighth. Excuse me, May twenty-first, Sunday, May twenty-first is our next meeting. And we will basically start to kind of formulate our day. We're going to talk a little bit about what's happening and pick pencil in some of the activities for that period. We, you know, we had just a couple people put turn in, but I've gotten a couple emails from folks that say they still want to try to do things. And so at that meeting on May twenty-first, we'll have a better idea of what is going to be happening. I thought about the business open house, if that was another thing that was going to be a part of Heritage Days. And we know that there are some new ideas about our volunteer dinner and celebration and Spirit of America awards being combined on that Saturday night. So stay tuned. If you are curious about what's happening with Heritage Days, you can find out more by following the Heritage Days Facebook page. We have a Facebook page that has all of the updates, all of the important dates and pictures in the best place to follow it. So that's all I want to say about Heritage Days. Great. So we will move on to town manager communications. We have five minutes for this. Eric, take it away.
So I wanted to give us a brief update about some of the things happening in town. We are moving quickly into the, into the spring season. We have some new staff. We have Chris Cassiani coming back to help us out. So for the first time in, in probably three or four years, we're fully staffed in that area and have coverage of the transfer station. So I'm looking forward very much to the spring here and getting some work done. Work that is being done, but not by town staff, is really focused on Church Road at the moment. We're going to talk about the paving piece of that in, in, in a few minutes, but I wanted to point out that we are doing brush grinding and tree cutting. We're in the midst of that process right now. It looks a little rough and it will for a while, but that, that mulching does help preserve the road by opening it up. The, the chips can help suppress some vegetation and make the road safer and more accessible. And it is going to be a bit of a trial. This type of work has been done in other towns and the state of Maine does that type of grinding. But it certainly has a different aesthetic for the first few weeks and few months than, than cutting and removing everything from the roadside. So I just want folks to be aware. So I just want folks to be aware that, um, it may look a little bit rough now, but it will, um, it will improve, uh, as, as the months go on. Um, and, uh, tha- that's really what I wanted to say tonight.
Cool. Uh, easy enough, right? No worries. Um, our next item is boards committees, commissions and departments. Uh, if everyone had a chance to take a look. Uh, we received minutes from the age friendly committee, the budget committee, the comprehensive plan committee and a five-part trilogy or five-part saga, I should say, uh, from the conservation commission. Um, and, and it was great. It was like binge watching on Netflix. We got all the way from October eleventh uh, to February fourteenth. It was fantastic. So, uh, it was a, uh, a pentology perhaps is what it was. Um, so thank you. Any comments about those, uh, minutes or those particular submissions?
I appreciate getting them, but I'd like to just remind committee chairs that we ask for minutes to be, uh, monthly and they're supposed to be submitted within a week of the meeting in draft form. Um, so Eric, I think we need to look at um, if there's someone in the office who might be able to do something similar to what Kristen does with the messenger, sending out a reminder, you know, uh, solid waste committee Catherine, make sure you send me your agenda a week before your next meeting. Um, I, I think if we made a, a list and it, they just got sent out each week um, an hour or so in setup, but then it would be easy like she does with the messenger to just remind folks and, you know, remember submit your minutes within a week.
Um, yeah, okay.
It would just be helpful. And I mean, I feel sorry for a secretary who has to pull together five months of min- minutes all at once too. That's, that's burdening, so. That's it.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, we now have time set aside for public communication. Members of the public may address the select board. I'm gonna start with people online. If there's anyone online who would like to opp- uh, this opportunity to speak uh, to the select board, you may unmute and speak to us if you'd like. All right, very well. Uh, if there are any members of the public here tonight who would like to address the select board, uh, you have the floor. All right. Very well. Uh, seeing none, we move on to appointments, reappointments and resignations. We have five minutes set aside for this. Item twenty-three, one-ten is to consider the appointment of, is it?
Pear.
Pear Gar- Garter to the road committee. Mr. Garter, will you please take the podium? Uh, and introduce yourself up there behind the, the speaker there. There we go. That is a microphone, Dennis. Thank you. All right. Uh, excellent. Uh, you can see, uh, in, uh, page fifteen, excuse me, sixteen is Pear's, uh, interest form, um, and I would say pretty thoroughly um, qualified. Uh, anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to say that's quite the impressive resume you got there.
Yes.
Not experienced civil engineer.
Yeah.
And thank you from jumping right from the job into a committee.
Yeah, just the time.
Yeah, 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 absolutely. So wonderful to have folks, uh, with your background and, and to help out in Reedfield, so it's.
Sorry about my accent that I don't pronounce the letter O very well. After thirty years in bed, I still haven't.
Well, we skip it too sometimes.
Yeah.
Um, I would entertain a motion, uh, on behalf of this appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Pear Carter to the road committee effective tonight and a return lasting through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second that.
It's been moved and seconded to appoint, uh, Pear Carter to the road committee, uh, for a term that ends on six thirty twenty-five. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Uh, you may stick around or you may, uh, have a good evening. It's up to you. Yeah, I would, I would, I'd go home and grab some dinner, which I do. Thank you so much. That's right. Absolutely.
Yes, I do.
Our next item, uh, is to, uh, talk about old business, uh, which is, uh, important tonight. We have fifteen minutes set aside for this. Item twenty-three, zero, twenty-one is to consider additional pavement grinding work and a contract amendment for Church Road. Eric, lead us through this. This is also an, an additional, um, piece in our um, supplemental, uh, attachment in our online packet.
Yes, and so the easiest way to think about this and look at this probably is with the supplemental information. Uh, some of the information provided, uh, in the packet, uh, is actually, uh, a little bit out of date. Uh, and so, um, we've been working on Church Road, putting it in the capital investment plan, uh, probably, well, it's, it's always been in there, but uh, it came up in twenty twenty-two. Um, the project was approved, uh, in, uh, August of twenty twenty-two. Um, and then we move forward and, um, uh, we're, uh, preparing to pave, uh, and do the work this spring. Um, in reviewing this project, uh, we see that there is a bigger need, uh, for, uh, reclamation work than what had originally been, uh, envisioned. Uh, when we started this, we thought that, uh, an, an overlay would be sufficient, uh, and then
An overlay over just because I'm.
Over the existing asphalt.
Right, just another lamination.
And so, uh, probably a month ago, I came to the select board and said, well, you know, there's a section here that's in rough shape. Uh, it looks like we should be grinding and reclaiming that. Um, and the more we got involved with this, the more we got out in the field and looked at the pavement conditions. Uh, it became apparent that that area also should be expanded. Uh, so originally we were looking at, uh, reclaiming the area in front of the, um, primarily in front of the cemetery where it's lower, where we have the potholes. Um, but once you crest the hill there, uh, you run into an area where it's not potholed, but you have, um, uh, pavement breaking up in the travel lanes, so the wheel lanes, uh, you have, it looks almost like a spider web in, in a lot of places because of the, um, the, the crack ceiling that's been done. Uh, and so, uh, looking at this, uh, we did bring it to the road committee and discuss this. Uh, it seems as though our best option would be to fix the base before we pave over it. Um, it would be something like painting over peeling paint on your house. Uh, it's not a good idea. Uh, and having recognized that this need exists, uh, we could try to break it up and do it over a couple of years or, uh, we could do it, uh, now, uh, as part of this project. Um, and that's the recommendation that we came to is to do it right and do it fully. Uh, Church Road is one of our longer roads. It's two miles, uh, two point one five miles. Uh, and it's also one of the most heavily traveled, uh, roads we have in town. So, uh, it's very important to do it correctly. What, uh, the select board has approved so far have been three pieces, the, the original three hundred and fifty-two thousand dollar, uh, six hundred um, contract from two thousand eighteen, uh, and a nineteen thousand dollar, uh, reclamation that covers the section from the fairgrounds to pool road. Um, and then we also approved the, uh, eleven thousand for tree and brushwork, uh, which we can consider, you know, more or less separate. But it's important to know that that's part of the overall cost of the project. Uh, what, uh, hasn't been, uh, approved would be the additional grinding from pool road to fog road. So that same treatment of taking the, the asphalt that's damaged and cracking, uh, and, and, and badly cracking, grinding it up and making that a base layer. Once that's done, we can then add, uh, the base asphalt, which is, uh, the next line in this, um, supplemental piece. Uh, and that would be for a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars, fifty cents. As an estimate, so all of these are tonnage estimates, right? We don't know until we get on the, in the ground, uh, what actually is gonna be needed. But, um, these are pretty reliable numbers. We've talked about them with Pike. Uh, we know the length and width of the road. We know how thick this is supposed to be. So their tonnages, um, I, I think are reliable on this area. So those two pieces take care of the, um, the additions to the cost of this contract, but fortunately, we have some things that will help lessen the cost of the contract. The first of which is when you pave over roads that have a light rutting, uh, or uneven surfaces or even potholes, which isn't advised, but i- it's, it's done. Um, you have to put in a shim, so a layer of thin, um, uh, asphalt that has smaller aggregate size. Uh, and that rolls out and makes a nice even surface, so you can then do a full coat of the surface coat. Um, when you reclaim, you don't have to put that shim in because you are starting off with probably two and a half inches of solid base material that's been rolled and formed to the proper contour. So because we are looking at reclaiming a section of road, um, that's, I'd say probably I think it was thirty-seven hundred feet, um.
Thirty-seven fifty.
Thirty-seven fifty. Um, that, um, means we don't have to do the shim in that area. So that's gonna save us forty thousand dollars, thirty-nine thousand five hundred one. Also, will be signed this contract in August. Um, the price of asphalt was much higher than it is now, so we're looking to be able to save about six dollars per ton for the asphalt that we do put down. And that, um, for the, um, the areas that we're talking about would be the shim in the areas that aren't being reclaimed and the, um, overlay for the entire road length. So when you, um, add those things up, one is nine thousand, uh, five hundred, the other is forty-eight hundred. Um, and so we have somewhere around, um, uh, fifty, fifty-three, fifty-four thousand dollars in savings to offset some of the added cost. Um, i- it's helpful. It's still a large chunk of money. We're looking at spending, uh, uh, upwards of four hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um, over the course of this project. But when you look at a two-mile road and the rehabilitation work that's necessary and really putting money into doing things right so that we don't have surface cracking, uh, I'm sure all of you have been on, uh, on Route seventeen uh, and Route forty-one after the, the DOT comes through and paves, they do a, a half inch of pavement. Uh, and then the next summer, you have those cracks coming, uh, you know, right back that, that were there, uh, a year or two ago. Uh, so we don't want that to happen on Church Road. So that's my long explanation of essentially a request to expand the scope of this project, um, and to, um, uh, spend approximately four hundred and fifty-seven thousand in total on the work happening on Church Road.
Sure. All right, let's go with Sean first.
So Eric, if I'm clear, from the green and red checked boxes, you're asking for another seventy-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars over what's already been approved.
In that, yes. Yep.
And where will we come up with that money?
So currently we have around six hundred, eight thousand dollars that is available in our paving reserve. Uh, there's a hundred and fifty thousand that's set aside for other projects, uh, but we have six hundred and eight thousand that could be used for this particular project. Um.
And that's already there.
It's already there, but, uh, we do wanna pay, pay mind to the fact that we have some paving we'd like to do next year. We do have money budgeted three hundred and twenty-five thousand, if I remember correctly, coming July one to help supplement that. So we'll have, uh, probably close to five hundred thousand dollars again, uh, but we're looking at doing lane road and possibly Thunder Castle. Um, so this all plays into the long-term schedule that we have. Uh, it doesn't really change, um, I think functionally what's gonna happen. It might change when it happens by, by a year, um, but probably less because we did have a bit of a buffer coming into this year. Uh, and so we do have capacity financially to handle this, to get this work done right and, um, and still be in, in a position where we can uh, get other work done that needs to be done.
Makes sense to me.
Carol, did you have something?
I just, I was with you until you said hundred thousand something, but so there's the one, I was with you with the three fifty and then the nineteen thousand and the eleven thousand for trimming. And then there's, I was trying to get a grasp of what the increase was, which you clarified. Um, which was seventy-four thousand something. And you said the roads committee met on this and they.
Yeah, we had a meeting a couple of weeks ago, um, and talked about the, the Church Road grinding and reclamation and paving, um, and discussed, you know, how best to approach this. And I think, um, you know, there, there, there wasn't much debate. It really, uh, their view is that putting good pavement over a pavement that's cracked uh, and alligator, which is the term they use when it looks like that, um, is just a, it's a bad idea and bad investment. So that it was pretty well, um, decided that, uh, if we had the money, we should do it, um, and, um.
Too bad you let Pear go early.
I know, right? Yeah, it seems like, it seems like, yeah, I, I, I have to say, I'm, I'm intimately involved with a project right now in another town that is the same exact thing. Where instead of having a good foundation to work on, they just kept laminating it. And so it's just, it's just like anything. It just, yeah, it just doesn't, it doesn't work. And so certainly with the, the eye towards the future of Church Road, which I agree, you know, is, is, is a heavily traveled road. Um, I'd rather do it right the first time than, than, than do something that was, was bad if we have it set aside too. So I, I, I'm, I'm pretty set with this. Anybody have any questions?
Well, just one comment you made, Eric. What do you foresee that we would have to push other roads back? Cause that.
Well, n- not currently, uh, because we, um, we actually are doing, uh, engineering and testing right now, uh, on, um, uh, Lane Road, uh, and, um, we're doing test borings at the recommendation of the road committee uh, because there's some pretty bad rutting on that road. Uh, the, the, the pavement's not delaminating or anything like that, but there's some deep wheel wells. Um, and, uh, so we're wanting to understand why that's happening. So we're right now investing in engineering work for that. Uh, and, uh, we'll be doing some work also on Thunder Castle, uh, Road uh, and Chase Road, uh, because there are some areas there where we have, uh, unexpected failures, I guess. Uh, road, uh, surface conditions that are quite rough. So long story short is, um, we're kind of in an intervening period where we're assessing what to do next, um, and getting more information about what the base material looks like. So we can decide, do we wanna put in geotext stuff, fabric? Do we wanna reclaim this? Is there a culvert there we don't know about, which is what we think may be happening in one spot?
Um, but when we originally, when we originally approved Chi- Church Road, I don't wanna say the wrong road now. We originally approved Church Road last fall. You, you had a pretty good list of estimates for other roads in town with.
It's like a forecast.
Yeah, I just hope that.
Yeah.
We don't change those forecasts because I know we've bumped stuff before and and then like Church Road, we're catching up because it got bumped, right?
I think.
Why it might have got a little worse.
You're absolutely right. Yeah, the fact that this had to wait a year, um, be- because of, in, in large part because of delays that started with COVID and, and rolled forward. But, um, I think that what would happen is right now Lane was ahead of Thunder Castle in the, in the work schedule. Uh, I think that, um, likely what will happen is we'll end up doing Thunder Castle prior. Um, and maybe even a certain section of it just to fix that base issue, um, and a section of Chase. Uh, but I think that with, um, with close to five hundred thousand dollars in reserve, we never wanna use all of that because we do have emergencies that come up. But I think that we can do, um, pretty easily one of those roads being much shorter than, than church. Um, I think they're probably a half mi- well, uh, uh, Lane is probably half mile. Uh, Thun- Thunder Castle and Chase add up to probably three quarters or maybe a little bit more. Um, but those, those will take a little bit more money, but I'm, I'm comfortable that what we have in reserve will allow us to do one of those projects and then carry forward. And I don't think there's any harm, uh, long-term at all to um, uh, to spreading that out. And if need be, we can look for a little bit additional funding. I'm not sure that's gonna be necessary. I think that we had a sizable buffer going into this and we'll be okay.
Great, good. Go ahead, Catherine.
You haven't mentioned the, um, I'm not sure how to word it, the project in front of the Mason's Hall?
Yeah, so that's part of those allocated funds.
Okay, and the corner up at P Ridge and Nickerson.
Yes, we have fifty thousand for those. And we also have, um, again, some part of that money coming next year would be to help supplement that work.
And by next year, you mean in July?
In July, yes.
Next fiscal year, okay. So they're still in the plan and not being pushed out again.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just as a side note, I often think that, you know, people just assume that, that, that people know why Eric knows this, but Eric is actually, in addition to the town manager, the road commissioner. And so he, he knows a thing or two about the road, so it's interesting to hear it all sort of break down. So, thank you very much. Anything else?
Go ahead, Steve. I have one more question. Who knows a thing or two? Um, so just, just one or two. Is there a number that you like to keep in the road reserve? Paving reserve, the roads?
Well, it's interesting you mention that. I think that's one of the discussions I'm hoping we can have in uh, July or August when we have our planning meeting with the budget committee. Uh, having those reserve thresholds, um, is gonna be a really important discussion. Um, I, I wouldn't want anything less than, than about a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand dollars in there. Um, and that's about where we would be at the end of this project for this year. But again, we'll be in July, starting off with a fresh batch and we'll be back up to five hundred, uh, almost five hundred thousand.
Cause for example, didn't we spend seventy-five thousand dollars on rain issues during that storm in December?
Less than that, it was probably forty.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
But a chunk.
But a big chunk, yeah. Uh, and it's one reason.
Yeah, exactly.
Why we have a, a road capital reserve and a road operating reserve. Because th- those funds really, um, when you have storms, uh, storm damage like that, that most of the time would come out of the operating, uh, budget. But, um, in this case, we had to dip into the, the reserve because it was just sizable now.
Sorry again. So two things, um, we scheduled that meeting with the budget committee for June, correct?
Yeah. I'll have to check that. I probably gave a wrong date.
Well, you just said in July or August.
Oh, well, then I'll make sure I correct that.
Second June meeting, so.
Alright.
Um, and oh, shoot. What was the other thing?
Oh, geez. Think about the road, grinding, roads.
Yeah, it's not that important. Oh, well. Yeah, it's not that important. Oh, well.
Um, well, and just before you guys uh, uh, vote on this, I do wanna say that the last piece of this, um, the last two pieces will be striping the roads once it's paved, uh, and some traffic calming. Um, we are already concerned about speeding on Church Road. Um, I am gravely concerned about speeding on Church Road after we clear the brush from the road edges and make it perfectly smooth for two miles. Uh, so we're gonna be looking at some some um, different measures. We talked about some with the Road Committee, um, uh, to try to help slow people down. We might try some painting. Uh, we might try to put in some of the 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 little ballers that that you've seen in Mount Vernon, um, to help just give people a visual cue. Um, and of course, we're gonna have our road speed sign out there. It should have, um, if it didn't go out there today, it'll be out there tomorrow um, in anticipation of this work. But um, I just wanted folks to know that we are very aware and and share concerns about speeding on Church Road, uh, especially after this work's done, so.
That's Carol.
Um, so you have the plans for both sides of the Church Road sidewalk. This is a little bit off topic, but it's while you're talking about Church Road, is there a date for discussion with the residents yet, or can we set one?
Uh, we we uh, we have a date for um, the engineers to come and talk to the Select Board, uh, first. Uh, because uh, the board, you'll be answering questions from the public. So in discussing it with the engineer, it made sense to give you a heads up about the two options and the pros and cons and all that information that was uh, presented, so that you can then field questions from all residents in town. So right now, we're looking at having that meeting on on May eighth. Um, your next Select Board meeting. That would be the time to then talk with the engineers and set a time for a public hearing. Um, I mean, the public is welcome to come and talk at the Select Board meeting, but they felt and I felt that it was important for you to have the information, so that when people ask you questions, you can have answers.
But 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 I I I don't think, um, we have put off the public since last fall and they've been asking. So let me just say the the engineers are going to meet with the public, right?
Yes, they will. They'll meet with the public. The we have three meetings scheduled, one with the Select Board, or it's not scheduled, but three meetings that are budgeted and planned. W- one with the Select Board, one with the residents who live on the road, and then one with the general public. And so the the uh, the the intent was to have a meeting with the Select Board, so you could be answering questions from everybody, um, which you'll get, uh, and then meet with the individual property owners. And then have the meeting with the general public. But all three of those meetings, of course, are open to public comment. It's not as though it's just the engineers talking with the Select Board. Um, the forum really is the Select Board meeting as opposed to the the individual uh, meeting. And really, anybody can come to any of those meetings. It's not a closed door meeting just with the the property owners, although that'll be the focus of that second meeting.
I I'm not comfortable answering any questions of the public or the residents until the residents on that on that um, road have had a chance to be heard. So can we make it? I I don't know. I I don't think we come first. I don't want people asking me questions about that project that they've been waiting for a very long time to be heard. Can we put the residents on that road that this will impact as soon as possible? I I just
I mean, I guess that's a discussion for the for the Select Board. I I don't, I mean, I'm just moving things forward. If you don't, if you don't have a, if you're not comfortable with the schedule, then then you could, um, I mean, they're certainly able to come to the meeting on the eighth.
Yeah. Let me ask Sean, Sean, go ahead. What would you do?
I was gonna say, I like that idea only because I was approached by somebody from the Church Road after it was posted and we did you share it? Facebook?
Yeah, yeah.
Somebody said, I saw that. No, the actual, the whole stuff's up on the site.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I tried to look at it to answer a question. And it is confusing. And so I would like to get the information, just so that I know what I'm reading a bit better from the drawings, because there's, there's a lot of lines.
Yeah, yeah.
And colors for different things. I would really like to know, I would like to be more educated on the two si- the pros and cons of both sides of the roads and what these drawings mean before I speak to anybody else.
Is is it possible to make a special invitation to the people who are living on the residents on Church Road? We're gonna have this Select Board meeting. Yeah, if you're gonna be here, you're welcome to come, of course. They would be anyway, but there's no harm in like making sure we tell them, right? Directly. I mean, you know, send them a little note or something.
What about just having both meetings on the same night? So we could start the Select Board meeting at five thirty or at six. Oh, probably not before five thirty. I know some of you are working and can't get here. Um, but we could have our meeting and then um, have the public that are on that road that would be most directly affected, um, in terms of their property the same night. Um, and so that way, we could have our chance to talk and discuss with the engineers without the public asking questions. And then have the public have their chance to ask questions. You see what I'm saying?
I I think it should be dope, uh, joint, because I would like to hear what the residents on that road ask as well.
But as the governing body, we have to make sure that we understand what's there and what's being presented. So I think we have to have a chance to ask the questions first about understanding as much as we can about the engineering aspects and how that affects things. And then, eh, you know, for whatever period of time that is, twenty minutes, a half an hour, and then have public comment after that and and directed to the residents, I think. I mean, it's all in the same meeting.
Yeah, I like having them the same. I I I'll tell you, I I don't, I don't think there's any problem having uh, just a little bit of a a a kind of an opportunity to kind of one on one. I mean, we will be the point of contact, whether the engineers are here or not. You know what I mean? We're gonna, people are gonna come to us for certainly. Um, but I I like the idea of having both meetings on the same night and just just a little bit of a preview, so then we could hope disseminate it. Um, cause I know I'm gonna have questions. Um, and hopefully, once we get to the public meeting, if we've had the same questions, we can share that with them. So I I I I like the idea of having it earlier and having both meetings on the same night, May eighth. Um, which would be just sort of the first, it 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 would be sort of the first foray into what I think is gonna be a couple of these, which which they want.
Doesn't that seem redundant, though, for the engineers? It's gonna be a lot, I would guess, a lot of the same questions. And so instead of the engineers, we're taking, we're paying these engineers hourly, I would assume. So instead of them taking their time to answer our questions and the residents to ask the same questions when they're gonna lay it out, that just seems really redundant time of theirs.
If the residents are at the first meeting, this Select Board
Are are you guys saying they're welcome at our?
Of course, of course. What we do here is we have a public comment section.
Okay.
And then we have our business.
Yeah.
And then, and and so
Then you have the
So we would just have the presentation made with a chance for us to ask questions
Yeah.
From a a different standpoint, because we're not the residents on the road. And we're the people who have to pay for it to make sure that everything is copacetic for everybody.
Yeah.
And then have the residents have their chance to respond after they've listened to all the same things that we've heard.
So they'll they'll be hearing the same things we are.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I was getting.
Not not executive session.
Yeah, it's Absolutely different. Any So the first one will be, the first one will be the Select Board meeting, and then the second one will be, uh, the public meeting, the the hearing for
But like we're meeting is pu- public.
Public, absolutely.
Same information.
It's just semantics. It's it's they're both public.
They may have some of the same questions, but if we ask a question first and then someone in the uh, one of the residents goes, oh, that answers one of the questions I had.
Yeah.
Right?
So maybe, yeah, maybe what we should do is do all of our business first. If we started at five thirty and then have the engineers here with the public at six thirty.
Oh, good idea.
And we'll have them make a presentation and then we'll have time for us to ask questions and then we'll have time for the public to ask questions. Does that work, Carol?
Yeah.
Brainstorming this here.
Yeah, everybody, everybody's welcome.
And I think we have to be prepared for it to take some time.
Yeah, absolutely.
And not try and really work, you know, friend over here is whispering in my ear about times. But it's, but Sandy's right. We wanna make sure people don't feel like they're
Absolutely.
You know, we have a five minute public, so just making sure people don't think it's part of the five minute public. This will be a special part.
Oh, yeah, this is a, this is a special.
Kind of focus like at that meeting on people who are on Church Road. Not that other residents in town couldn't be here and maybe ask questions, but I think that the intent here is for the first hearing to be, to let those people express their input.
Yes.
Whatever it is. And then we're going to have another separate meeting at another date, correct? It will be general public comments.
Yes, so so the the intent was to have, uh, just just because different stakeholder groups have different focuses uh, and different interests, um, what was originally and was um, presented and approved as part of that whole budget, uh, was to have those three stakeholder meetings, one for the Select Board, one for the the residents on the road, uh, and then one for the general public. So if you're doing two together, um, that'll probably save some money. Um, uh, it might not give you the same um, le- level of 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 engagement that you might have otherwise, but but that's that's okay, if that's that's the intent. Um, and then we will have another public hearing and the 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 meetings with the public would be at the public hearing. So we would notice it as a public hearing.
And the public is invited to that.
The public's invited, yeah. So so you would
People who live on the road.
And the people and the people who don't.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, that's that's always the case with public hearings.
I'm going to request that we uh, sort of get back to item twenty three zero twenty one, uh, which is consider additional pavement grinding work for the Contract Amendment for Church Road. Uh, I would entertain a motion to accept this or one way or another, anyway.
I need to understand the total amount first.
Yes.
Is the four fifty seven, is that the total? Because we don't wanna re-approve.
Yeah.
We don't wanna re-approve the tree work, for instance.
That's right, yeah. So so that would be the total estimate. Again, the numbers that we have are based on estimated tonnages. Um, so it might be better to just approve the scope uh, and the um, the unit prices that are described in the attachments, uh, as opposed to the final number. But um, I I think if you wanted to give a safe number, you could say four hundred seventy five thousand, but I I'd just recommend that you approve the scope, um, and the
That's on the Pike Industries, the one eighteen, two seventy seven fifty.
Yes, and that shows that the unit price, uh, for the for the per ton of asphalt.
Unit price.
Uh, and then the same unit price for the grinding as well.
So approve the unit price, Eric, is that what you said?
Oh, it's the second page of
We have to, do we have to even approve that? Can that unit price change? Based on, I mean, oil is changing.
It it may change in the two weeks that we're uh, here. So it's, like I said, these are estimates, so it is a little bit tricky. If you wanted to go give a high cap, um, you could take that approach, um, or you could just approve the um, the scope uh, of the project, which would be um, reclaiming from uh, the fairgrounds to Fog Road, uh, uh, adding uh, the um, uh, the base asphalt, uh, and then uh, shimming the uh, the remaining length and overlaying the entire, the entire road length.
Um, cause we don't wanna approve a hundred and eighteen thousand, because that's not what
That's right. No, I I got that. Yeah, I understood that.
You wanna make that motion, Sean?
Oh, thanks.
You get it?
I think so.
All right.
But, you know, uh, so I'm making a motion to approve an additional base reclamation from Pool to Fog Road as well as the base asphalt for the fairgrounds to Fog in the current scope of work with Pike.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the scope of the work, uh, as indicated on Fa- uh, on Church Road. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, we have uh, new items to discuss. Item twenty three one eleven is discuss the plan for annual roadside cleanup day. Uh, and I can do that right now, as a matter of fact. Um, every year, uh, in May, um, I have to say that when I started on the Select Board, I had someone who was taking very good care of me uh, and showing me and telling me what was happening when I had questions, and that was John Parent. Uh, John Parent really enjoyed and uh, promoted a Reed Field Cleanup Day uh, in May. And uh, we've sort of continued that through COVID, we had it be uh, the whole month of May. Uh, and that way, people uh, could uh, do uh, cleanup at their leisure. Um, and whenever they were able to throughout the month. However, this year, we're gonna try to do a hybrid of both of those. We are going to say that the official Reed Field Cleanup Day for May is Saturday, May thirteenth. It's the Saturday before Mother's Day. Can do a good deed, make your mom proud of you before you buy her cake. But that is Saturday, May thirteenth. That day is when uh, you may see folks uh, on the side of the road use caution. Every year when we do the cleanup, there are uh, basically equipment and eh, little items that are available from the uh, transfer station, like grabbers and bags and vests uh, and gloves and things like that. And that's going to be on the thirteenth. Now, if for whatever reason, you can't be there on the thirteenth, maybe you're going to see your mother in Poughkeepsie and you can't be there, we're still offering that equipment uh, at the transfer station uh, throughout the month of May. So we're designating a day where we feel like the community can all come together. But if that doesn't work for you, because everyone has different schedules, um, you can certainly uh, go to the transfer station, get your grabbers, your gloves, uh, and your bags and clean up your road. The way this works is on uh, the website, as well as the reedfieldmain.org website, as well as the Facebook page. We will have a signup genius uh, program. You basically go on there and you sign up to clean your road or a road near you in Reed Field. Uh, and we've had pretty good success over the years with getting people to sign up for their roads. Uh, but this year, uh, we hope for even more. So uh, that's kind of what we're looking at for the Reed Field roadside cleanup.
Bravo.
Yay. I'm glad to do this and I hope uh, Mr. Parent is uh, looking down on us uh, with a smile. Uh, our next item is item twenty three one twelve, which is to consider a special event liquor license for Kent's Hill School. Uh, this can be found in your packet on page twenty five. Looks like it is a reunion and alumni engagement. Uh, we have done these before uh, for Kent's Hill, which is why uh, I don't think that they uh, have to be here tonight. Um, any questions about this?
I'd just like to thank, I think it's Emily Bellevue, um, for having a complete application. That's always very helpful. Um, and it's very clear and, um,
The stick figures really do give I would say that, you know, when when I, when I see this in my mind, I see the stick figures. So thank you very much. Emily, we appreciate it. Um, it, I would entertain a motion to approve this.
I'll make a motion to approve the Kent's Hill Alumni Reunion Engagement on June ninth and tenth from six PM to eleven PM.
Second. For, for what?
Excuse me?
For a liquor license.
For a liquor license.
Uh-huh, good. There we go.
Second.
There we go. Excellent. It's been moved and seconded to approve the liquor license for the Kent's Hill School uh, reunion event, uh, which is happening, uh, June ninth and tenth. Uh, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Uh, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, well, do we, don't we adjourn it? No, we have to go into executive session first.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
If you could have someone make the motion, we can then go downstairs.
Yeah.
Discuss, and um, there is no action planned after. This is just a discussion for the union contract negotiations.
Figured out, yeah.
Uh, so, um,
We don't come back up.
You don't come back up. It's, uh, but, um, but the meeting could be adjourned at that time.
I'll make the motion, I'm reading this from the, the agenda. I'll make a motion to enter an executive session to discuss a labor negotiations matter, specifically the A F S C M E nine three local two oh one one oh oh contract renewal pursuant to one M R S A section four zero five subsection six D. Invite the town manager to attend and state that we will be having no further business at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second, yeah, okay, yeah. It's been moved and seconded to do all of that. Uh, all in favor? Thank you very much. We are there.
Thank you.